To convene the October 12th meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Brightingam?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
And Councilmember Klaufenstein is absent.
Alrighty, can I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to do the invocation? And then can I ask Councilmember John O'Neil to lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Lord, we ask for your presence here tonight as we work to understand and address the needs of our community. We humbly ask that you would guide us to answer those needs in a way that best serves all of the citizens of Garden Grove. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge. Ready again. I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Alrighty, that takes us on to presentations, and we do have two different ones. The first, 1A, is Orange County Housing Finance Trust Joint Powers Update Report.
My name's Adam Eleson. I'm the manager of the Orange County Housing Finance Trust. And I not only thank you for your time tonight to give you a very brief five-minute presentation about where we've gone since you joined the trust, but also to give some of the accomplishments that we've been able to accomplish. So, the Orange County Housing Finance Trust was created two and a half years ago in March of 2019. It's a joint powers authority comprised of the County of Orange and 23 Orange County cities, including Garden Grove. The purpose of the trust is to finance and help facilitate the construction of affordable housing throughout Orange County. And the trust has a specific goal of contributing to the construction of 2,700 new permanent supportive housing units by the year 2025. Permanent supportive housing is just simply housing that is beyond what affordable is. It provides a wraparound service for certain clientele. Slide. Since its founding two and a half years ago, the trust has gained the support and membership of 23 of the county's 34 cities, with a goal of having the remaining 11 cities sign on by the middle of next year. We've adopted a five-year strategic plan that shows how we will reach the goal of 2,700 new permanent supportive housing units. To date, the trust has awarded over $20 million in funding to 13 projects throughout the county totaling 901 new affordable housing units. We've been active in reaching out to our member cities, affordable housing developers, service providers, and the public with information about the needs and opportunities for affordable housing developments within the county. Specifically, the trust has issued and awarded two notices of funding available, one in 2020 and the second in 2021. In 2020, we had $11.5 million available and awarded over $10 million to seven projects. In 2021, we had $11 million available and again awarded just over $10 million to six projects. These project funds have come from a variety of sources, including the County of Orange, the Mental Health Services Act funds, and local housing trust fund program dollars from the State of California Housing and Community Development. Orange County would be receiving, would not be receiving any of these local housing trust fund dollars if the trust did not exist. We've been able to bring $5 million a year into the county, new dollars for affordable housing, simply through our existence. And one of the most useful tools that have received a lot of acceptance, a lot of support, is a simple tool that we put onto our website. The website's at the top of the screen there, you can see. This website tab shows how we track the local affordable housing projects throughout the county. It's interactive. You can touch on any of those pushpins, and it'll display all the information about the project, including the developer, how many units, where it's located, the status of the project, whether it's completed or under construction. This helps us to be very transparent to the media, to the public, the cities, to show where in the county all these affordable housing projects and dollars are going towards. All of the trust activities are funded through a number of different sources. Our administrative funds come from a mix of county funds, the state funding. SCAG provided us some grant funding for our administrative funds. And with these sources, the trust has been able to eliminate any member city contributions for this year and next year, and hopefully for the future. Our capital funding for to build, to help finance the projects comes from three sources: the County of Orange General Fund, the Mental Health Services Act, and the State of California. Typically, these sources have allowed us to award about $10 to $11 million a year for new housing developments in the county. However, we are not content with the accomplishments so far. As I mentioned earlier, we're trying to expand the trust membership to all 34 cities. We're also working to grow our capital funding through a direct allocation of the state budget, as well as developing sources of private donations to the trust for greater flexibility and get the types of support we can offer to workforce and affordable housing developers who are creating these new communities in the county. As we build on these additional resources, we're always mindful of achieving the goal of creating 2,700 new permanent supportive housing by 2025, and working towards a more collaborative approach with other stakeholders throughout the county. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Awesome. Thank you so much for coming tonight and giving us an update. Colleagues, do you have any questions or comments? I remember when this was first coming about, you know, several years back, and it was coming in, and it was a big new mysterious deal. And it's cool to see that it's actually being put to good use, and that a lot of housing units are being created, and that it's fully in motion now. So, we appreciate you coming in and taking the time to give us these updates.
Great, great. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you. Alright, item 1B is the Civic Center Community Engagement Presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to have Chris Chung and Chief DeRay Sisbee in the presentation this evening. So, as we swap over to our PowerPoint. So, thank you again. We're excited to launch our Civic Center Engagement, Community Engagement Process. It's our planning and outline that will be undertaken to really share a conversation with our community, and it's intended to really take a global look, a comprehensive look at the overall Civic Center area and some of the ideas the community may have to see in the future. So, I'm going to have Chris switch over to the next slide. So, I thought it'd be helpful to provide a frame of reference for the audience as to what is the Civic Center. We will briefly share the importance of the Civic Center area. We will summarize some of the strategic planning efforts that has been undertaken to date. And lastly, we will go over the outline of our next steps in terms of beginning the Civic Center Community Engagement Process and tackle some of the areas that will be explored. Next slide, please. So, for many of our Garden Grove residents and visitors collectively who live, work, and play in the city, and in or around the Civic Center area, there are many familiar landmarks. It is home to the Village Green, the Gem Theater, our historic Main Street, our Friday Night Car Show, the Garden Amp, Steel Craft, Garden Grove High School, the annual Strawberry Festival, our local farmer's market, our senior center, our community center, our city hall, and our public safety facilities, and much more. When we take a look back seven years ago, when we began the reimagining process that took place in 2014, there was a series of mind mixers intended for community engagement outreach, where a lot of community ideas were brought forward to explore and activating our Civic Center area. Much of that work has bared fruit, and today we're excited to highlight some of those success stories, along with some of the placemaking efforts that's been accomplished to date. We can certainly talk a little bit about our successful Open Streets events, the incorporation of public arts in and around the Civic Center area, and most recently, the Medal of Honor Bike and Pedestrian Trail that was spearheaded as a result of this reimagined effort. Some of the basic functional aspects of what makes up a Civic Center, it is the heart of the city. It is a place where your voice is heard and where important decisions are made. It is a place where public facilities, including public safety, are available to support the needs of the community, and it's also our community front porch. This slide talks a little bit about our strategic efforts over the past seven years. I mentioned briefly about the reimagined initiative that began in 2014 that activated our downtown area through Public Art, Active Transportation, and Placemaking. In 2017, we conducted a comprehensive analysis of our downtown parking area. In 2018, we launched and completed the Measure O Initiative and the Main Street Master Plan. In 2019, we completed the Parks Recreation Facilities Master Plan. In 2020, we completed the Dewberry Police Infrastructure Needs Assessment. And later on in this presentation, part of Chris's remarks will highlight some of the public outreach efforts that will be undertaken in which the general public will be able to access these documents. There is a brighter future ahead. As we begin to share the outline of our next steps in the Civic Center Community Engagement Process, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stiles to talk a little bit about our Measure O priorities, and to Chief DeRay to talk a little bit about our Police Infrastructure Needs Assessment.
Thank you, Lisa. I did just want to make a couple of comments about this particular slide on Measure O, just to kind of help our community remember, you know, what we passed in November of 2018, our one cent local sales tax for annual funding for public safety and vital city services. As council knows, we created our Measure O Civilian Oversight Committee, and that committee just held their second meeting of the year last week. And at our next council meeting, Sandy Thomas, who's the chair of that committee, will be coming before you to give you an update at the next council meeting about their report on continuing to review the Measure O expenditure of resources. So, she'll be here at the next, at the next meeting. And we feel really good about a lot of the work that's been done with Measure O, including the adding of, my gosh, 16 additional full-time police officers to our department. We created our SRT team that all of you are very familiar with, working in the community. What's not listed here is the work that we've done with our School Resource Officer Program with Garden Grove Unified School District, recruitment focus on hiring bilingual officers, and focusing on our 911 response times in the community. And so, now it's time for us to really focus on the facility upgrade piece of that plan that we talked to the community about, and this engagement process is the first part of that. So, with that, I think I want to turn it over to Chief, Police Chief DeRay.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. During our community meetings for Measure O, we discussed the need to improve our police department infrastructure due to the building being outdated, too small, and impractical for today's public safety. In January 2020, a space needs assessment was conducted by Dewberry to address the current and future needs of the department. The report documented the existing police facilities do not meet today's building codes, lacking fire sprinklers, fire alarms, and proper fire-rated walls, along with seismic deficiencies. Additionally, the Garden Grove Police Department is currently working with insufficient space in terms of building, parking, and site space needs.
You taking this, Chris?
Thank you, Chief DeRay. For the next steps, the city will launch a public outreach and community engagement effort. The city intends to work hand in hand with Garden Grove residents to explore opportunities in the Civic Center area for improved public amenities, and also evaluate the need to replace and modernize the public safety facilities to better meet the needs of the community for all current and future residents. This slide highlights some of the potential opportunities, which include expanded and improved parks and open spaces with high-quality amenities, a greater appreciation and infusion of arts and culture to represent the immense diversity of Garden Grove community, evaluating the need to replace and modernize the public police and public safety facilities to better meet the needs of the growing community, exploring opportunities to build safe, decent, and affordable housing for all persons in the community, updated and expanded community facilities with additional services and amenities, and potentially more. Through the public engagement process, the city intends to inform and engage with the community, ensuring participation from the broad range of stakeholders identifying the specific needs of the community. Over the past year, the pandemic introduced new challenges to public outreach, and the city adjusted and, where possible, used additional alternative methods to effectively engage with the community through avenues such as increased social media presence, virtual online community forums, and virtual online surveys. The city intends to use a similar comprehensive approach to utilize a wide variety of tools and methods. A website dedicated to the project will be developed and maintained with regular updates, educational information, flyers, news, and surveys to allow the community to stay connected, and the website is planned to go live by the end of this week. Regular social media presence will be maintained to inform the community of news and updates through all of the city's social media accounts. Public workshops will be held to connect with community stakeholders through in-person and virtual workshops. In-person and online surveys will provide additional opportunities for the public to stay engaged and provide valuable input on the specific needs of the community. And the city intends to make all necessary efforts to ensure information is accessible to all members of the community in languages that they understand. The timeline here starts off with the project kickoff in October, and we can look forward to public outreach beginning in November, December, with workshops and surveys forthcoming. After conclusion of the public outreach efforts, all public comments and feedback will be compiled with a final outreach summary report available and presented in March of 2022. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, everyone, for that report. This comes across casual, but I know this has been a lot of effort and a lot of time and energy put into bringing this forward. So, I'm really excited to see it get to this point where we're finally doing a kickoff towards actually doing something, and that we're approaching it the right way by starting with community engagement. So, it sounds like for the next plus or minus six months, we're going to go out there and just talk to the public and get ideas and do kind of a 30,000-foot perspective on what the future of the Civic Center area might look like, including the much-needed modernization of, you know, bringing forth a new police headquarters. So, the only thing I want to say, there's so many moving parts in this area, so I, I mean, any chance I get to talk about the Civic Center area, I always have to mention this, but, you know, we've got Steel Craft now next to City Hall, we've got Cottage Industries about to open, we've got other, you know, sort of ideas and stuff in the works, there's a mixed-use zoning overlay all back in there. We've got a dilapidated old police station that needs to be blown up and rethought out brand-new. So, there's, we've got our parks, our community services doing a Parks and Rec Master Plan citywide, and there's opportunities to engage with Civic Center Park and do cool stuff with that that would theme in with Steel Craft and Cottage Industries. So, you know, we need a new state-of-the-art police headquarters first and foremost, and that needs to move forward expeditiously and not get held up in a, you know, a long-extended analysis paralysis design process. But at the same time, we need to master plan the whole Civic Center area and say, where could we put affordable housing? Where could we put more, you know, downtown-type opportunities like Cottage Industries and Steel Craft that are going to draw people and pedestrians and e-scooters and bicyclists and stuff in the same area where you're going to have police cars racing in and out to attend to emergencies? So, all that needs to be thought out, the ingress and egress, the traffic circulation, the safety issues of just the overall Civic Center area. And this is a great way to start, kick it off, go out and actually engage with the public and say, you know, what all do we want to try and include and accomplish in here? So, I'm glad we're doing it. Thanks for the American Reinvestment Recovery Act sort of windfall that we get to deploy and focus largely on actually bringing about the police headquarters. Also, thank you to Measure O that we've got funding sources available now to get these projects kicked off. So, it's great that this is an actual tangible reality that we're going to move forward on and not just hopes and dreams that someday maybe we'll be able to do something. I mean, I'm excited that we can expedite getting our guys a new police headquarters. So, thank you all for the presentation. Colleagues, any questions, comments? We cool? Okay, cool. Thank you all. With that, we will go to oral communications. I do have several cards. Tom Raiber.
Hi, I'm Tom Raiber. I want to see all six of yourselves that got elected and all the staff workers' medical records. I want to see if you guys had AIDS, HIV, STD, yeast infection, UTI, or a pimple on your ass. Do I have the right to ask for that? The answer is no. But yet, the city of Garden Grove today requested for me to present a card to come into the building, which we, the people, own, not them and not yourselves, it's we, the people. So, pretty soon, this passport's going to be coming up, and you six, one's gone, need to go ahead and decide what side of the track are you on? The human side or the other side that's going to take the rights away from all of America and the 170-plus thousand here in Garden Grove? The American flag. I again went to the city hall, as I stated, and the American flag is still hidden for over 10 weeks. I've had three people tell me why it's over there, hidden next to the elevators. I'm not going to mention their names, but they told me that it's not hidden, that it's near the elevators. Well, the military flags are there where they have been always, and there's plenty of room to put our American flag and our state flag, our county flag, and our city flag presented to anybody who walks into We the People City Hall. Follow the money. There's a website that has all the school districts in California and how much money has been made because of this pandemic. Garden Grove is ranked number 12. $210.7 million they have made because of it. $5,232 per child is how it's calculated. But the number one, Los Angeles, $4.7 trillion, and their kids in Los Angeles are worth $11,144. Really? So, every school district, Garden Grove employees, they've been told that the city of Garden Grove recommends them to get the Vaseline. Who is this doctor? Do you know, there's a guy in Canada, his last name is King, and he got fined $1,200, and he won in court because Canada cannot prove that there's any virus. Thank you.
Nicholas Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, citizens of Garden Grove, my name is Nicholas Dibbs. I want to comment first on the 1B item on today's agenda, the Civic Center Community Engagement, and mention something that I mentioned back on August 26th at this meeting of the council, and that is, if you want to improve community engagement, you need to make these council meetings more accessible to those who cannot be here to make comments. And I've mentioned this to our city clerk this evening, and I'm asking you and City Manager Stiles to allow people who cannot attend in person to submit a written comment that staff can read during a three-minute period, so that they can get their comments out for the public regarding city items. So, please consider that. Thank you. I do want to thank the council, the city manager, and the staff, including John Monchancius, for having the Garden Grove Teen Action Collaborative Kickoff Meeting, which will be on Thursday, October 21st. And the Garden Grove Teen Action Collaborative is an opportunity for Garden Grove teens to serve their community in a leadership capacity while gaining career development skills and professional guidance. Participants will obtain volunteer hours at citywide special events, service projects, and working with various local nonprofits. And the program features include excursions, career and leadership trainings and workshops, and an annual teen leadership summit. This falls in line with what I've been saying for quite some time, that we need a youth commission to better engage our youth, but this is a step in the right direction. So, thank you all for doing that. I do want to mention that October is National Cyber Security Awareness Month. Go to hashtag be cyber smart, hashtag be cyber smart. I want to bring your attention and the public's attention to an article that came out in the Orange County Register on October the 10th. "One Pill Can Kill." That's the title of the article, and there's a documentary titled Dead on Arrival. We have a crisis with fentanyl, and it's going into illicit pills that the teens and the young adults are getting, and unfortunately, they take one pill and they're dead, basically. So, go to that article in the Orange County Register, "One Pill Can Kill," October 10th, 2021, and Google and view the short documentary, "Dead on Arrival." This October the 10th is Blue Light Awareness Day, and that was established by the California Legislature back in 2019. So, please go to bluelightsummit.com and isafe.com. Blue light hurts the eyes and can damage the brain and is a problem. Too much screen time causes problems with our youth and as well as adults. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jamie Yang.
Hello, my name is Jamie Yang. I'm here to suggest improving parking and landscaping ordinance for Garden Grove multiple family resident. I'm the register, I'm the owner of 10462 Dorothy in Garden Grove A Unit Apartment. I received a violation letter, which is attached to email that I sent to you guys, and regarding a landscaping ordinance. I realize that some of the ordinance can be changed for the benefit of a citizen of Garden Grove. I went to the city to meet the court enforcement personnel, Judy Ashley, and her supervisor, and I'd like to suggest changing some of the landscaping ordinance, which is about 40 years old, but they told me that I cannot address this issue to anyone but send a letter to Garden Grove council members. That is why I'm here today. Violation number one, we made a landscaping area in front of our property to have extra four parking spots. Number two, required to, violation number two, required to remove excessive pavement in the front of the yard to retain no less than 50% required for landscaping. I don't know how to calculate to come up with that, but that's a single-family zoning resident code. Although at the time, we didn't know it would violate the city ordinance, the benefit have greatly outweighed the purpose of the city codes. We have been using it as a four-parking area for several years. Due to homeless person who repeatedly leave the trash in front of our property that triggered the eyes of court enforcement and receive a warning letter about the trash and the landscaping area, we did take care of the trash. Julia Ashley, the court enforcement officer, told me that officer, told me that we require to remove very nice cement area of our parking space. And also, to retain no less than 50% required for landscaping. She's quoting four quotes in a violation letter, which is mostly belonging to single-family resident except 9.12.40.090. But Julie told me that multiple resident and single-family landscaping is almost the same without showing me any ordinance. I cannot find the landscaping ordinance in multiple landscaping code that 50% of landscaping in the front yard and remove excess pavement. In the current situation, the extra parking isn't necessary because street parking is overcrowded and there is insufficient parking space available on the street. For all this time, my tenant and the neighbor really appreciate the extra parking, and they had no complaints. At the same time, the rest of neighbor parked the car in our driveway on street cleaning day as for my tenants. This also lower opportunity of having their car broken into. This landscaping ordinance is about 40 years old, and nobody object this court so far. Forty years ago and today, we have a much different population and zoning ordinance are changing. SB 9 and 10 was just approved recently. Attach the first photo in the mail that I sent it to you. The landscaping was a cemented parking area that I didn't receive a violation that even though it didn't look good. That was 13 years ago, that I had a landscaping in that area. The second photo is a cemented parking area, looks clean, and can utilize the space for four parking area, but I receive a violation letter. For cemented parking lots gives improvement to the current situation and shortage of water and parking spaces. But it was a landscape area as before, and I follow Julie's request that we cover with the cement area with a turf. My opinion is that cemented area is much better than old landscape area because it does not require watering, therefore mitigate the droughting issue we currently have in California. There are only advantageous and positive impacts. Suggestion number one, I'm suggesting why Garden Grove City improve the zoning ordinance for the people of Garden Grove instead of abiding by a 40-years-old ordinance. Let me keep this for cemented parking space. Yes?
Jamie, my apologies. I've got to cut you off because we've got a time limit on the cards. However, in oral communication, not supposed to be a two-way conversation, but I promise you, I'm going to keep your card. I'm empathetic to your perspective and your angle, and I promise I'll personally look into this conscientiously and see if we can get you a response, because I understand the dilemma of...
Yes, I sent it out, the email...
I read your email as well.
Okay, good.
And all the...
But then I, sorry, I need to rectify this issue by October 27. Otherwise, I'm going to get a citation. So I need your response quick as possible so that, you know, I have to know which way to go.
I'll give it proper attention.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under oral communications? You already had your time. Thanks. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, we will close oral communications. We're going to recess to successor agency. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Member Bridegum?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Member Bowie?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here.
And Member Klavenstein is absent.
Could we already did oral communications simultaneously with city council consent items, just receive and file of the minutes? Can I get a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Bridegum?
Yes.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and reconvene city council. That takes us on to consent items. It's recommended that items 3A through 3F be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Any requests to pull?
A motion.
Second.
Roll call vote for the entire balance.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bridegum?
Yes.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Thank you. That takes us on to items for consideration. We have one listed, item 4A, which is award of a contract to RJ Noble.
Item 4A is award a contract to RJ Noble Company for the construction of project number CP 109,000 Euclid Westminster Intersection Capacity Enhancement. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Mrs. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, city council is being asked to award a contract to RJ Noble to improve the intersection of Euclid and Westminster. This project will add a 12-foot-wide southbound right turn lane along Euclid and a 12-foot-wide eastbound right turn lane along Westminster. And in general, the construction work will include demolishing, removing, and relocating items in the area of the widening, construction of new concrete curb, gutter, sidewalk, construction of the asphalt on both of the right turn lanes, and then installing landscape and hardscape. All new traffic signal installations on all corners of the intersections, and a new traffic controller will be required as well. All of this work is to be completed at a cost just over $1.1 million. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, contractor can begin work in November and should be complete by February of next year. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for using about, it was a grant project, so $730,000 of the Measure 2M grant fund, and the remainder of the money, about $393,000 of, will come out of gas tax. So no general fund will be used. This concludes staff's report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions or comments, colleagues?
No, I'll move it.
Or a motion?
Second.
Second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bridegum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
All righty. Takes us to matters, and we do have one item listed, which is item 5A, proposed resolution in support of Afghan refugees and people of Afghanistan, which was requested by Councilmember Deidre Tuha Nguyen. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As of last council meetings, we have, majority of us agreed to go back to revise the verbiage. And Councilmember John O'Neill and I have sat down, we sat down and we worked over the verbiage. And we have the resolution here, and I hope to have earned the support from all the council members, from all my colleagues. As you see the descriptions, with the 2020 census, we do have, you know, city of Garden Grove, we have 43% of Asians and 37% of Latino. That's been 80% of our city are immigrants, and majority of us are refugee. And I think this resolution is to support the Afghan refugee for their, you know, new home resettlement, especially in Orange County. Irvine has the largest Afghan refugee community there. However, there will be more Afghan refugees going to, you know, come into this country, and they're going to find new home in city of Garden Grove or Anaheim City. So I think with this resolution, from the city to show support along with the state and the federal government to welcome them. And I'm here to answer any questions. And I, first of all, I just want to say thank you so much to the Councilmember John O'Neill for working on this. And at the same time, I also want to give credit to the mayor of city of Irvine. She's also have a resolution there today, and the verbiage we have is similar, a little similar with the Irvine resolutions in support of Afghan refugee as well.
Thank you.
John?
Yes, hey, John, do you want to? Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a comment. So, you know, I went back and looked at it. I hadn't seen it before the last meeting. Basically, I don't think, you know, you can, I took the partisan, I'd like to take the partisan things out of it. And if you really look at this and take the politics out of it, any refugee from any country that comes here should be welcome. They're already here. Most of them are already here. A lot of these people put their lives on the line to help our military service people. And I've lived long enough to see crises in other countries, whether it be Mexico, Haiti, Venezuela, I mean, you name it, across the world. When these things happen and governments are overthrown, people are killed in the streets and hung from light poles and all sorts of atrocities. We're not talking about partisan politics here, getting caught up in the news at 6:00. And I know people have their different opinions, but I think we took the partisan stuff out of this. And regardless of it's from Af, right now is the focus on Afghanistan and the Afghan people and the refugees. I'm not talking about partisan people here. These are refugees that we're talking about. So between Tuha and I, I think we took the partisanship out of it and made it about the refugees. And so I'm in support of this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mayor Jones?
Please go ahead.
Councilman John O'Neill, I'm very disappointed when you think that we should take politics out of this or partisan out of this. You are right. None of us, you know, react to this based on partisan lie or based on politics or this or that. Let me reassure you that, you know, our position is not based on that. As a refugee, I do really care about all of the refugee. I want to order them with open arms. I want to welcome them with open arms. And in fact, when the news about Afghanistan broke out in August, I interviewed with, you know, France News Agency, RFA, and I did email and call out to my colleagues, meaning Vietnamese refugee, to help Afghanistan refugees as much as we can. But this is not about that. The reason that I think some of our council member react to this as the previous meetings is because it, you know, we are the city, and the mayor often remind us that, hey, our charter, our mission is to make sure that we focus on, you know, fixing the potholes, local issue, and not deal with, you know, federal or things that is our jurisdiction. That is the intent here, not because of we care, don't care about the refugee. We do care about the refugee. The issue that we have at base here is, so then, the Haitians refugee, right now, they're in the limbo along the borders. What is our city position with that? And then the many others, immigrants who are fleeing their country in hundreds of thousands along the borders, what are you going to do about it? Are you going to do another resolution? What about the people in Yemen? Right now, there is so much chaos and, you know, tragic in Yemen. What are we going to do about it? And then let's look back in the history, Somali. What are we going to do? So that is why I would like to urge you and Tuha to come up with a general statement that the city, our city is welcome, you know, all refugee, political refugees here in our city instead of, you know, every time there's a tragedy, there's a chaos or issue, then we come out with another resolution, and then who know, maybe we forget one, and then people feel bad that we, you know, didn't pay attention to the other groups. That is the intent, not because of we are dealing with, you know, partisan or politicians, political lie here. But the other thing that troubled me is I look at your revised resolution. It doesn't make much difference from comparing to the original version. And let me tell you some things. What about the 13 Saunders that made the ultimate sacrifice to evacuate the people of Afghanistan and US resident citizens? Why didn't we honor them? And one of that 13 US Saunders happened to be a very close relatives of one of our police staff. And whether we do this or not, we are going to welcome here in the United States. And in California, I just looked up earlier today, California alone will receive about 30, almost 32,000 refugee, twice the number of refugee that the highest state, which is Texas. Texas received only 13, nearly 13,500,000 refugee. We receive almost 32,000. We are more than double them. And the third state, which is Virginia, received only nearly 12,000. New York, one of the most populous state in the United States, received only nearly 4,000. Nowhere close to even one, you know, one, almost one nice of us. So do we need a resolution just to welcome them and have more of them come? No, we don't need to. And what about in your statement, you mentioned something like, you know, we want to welcome them because, let me try to read that here, because I don't want to put word in your statements. Whereas many Afghan citizens, government employees, interpreters, translators, and Afghan National Defense and Security Force personnel who supported our services member while they were serving in Afghanistan now for their life and their family's lives in jeopardy under the Taliban rules. You know, hundreds of thousands of US servicemen came to Afghanistan. And I know one goal of their mission is to get rid of the terrorists and in a way protecting the US and many of our allies. But we can create a lot more. We bring democracies, freedom, liberties to Afghan, to the people of Afghanistan. Why don't we mention that in here? More than 2,000 of our men and women in uniform have made the ultimate sacrifice for the people of Afghanistan as well. And nothing of that in here. Like I said, I call out to many of my Vietnamese Americans in our community. We do remember some 40 years ago, we are just like Afghanistan's refugees, came here heartbroken, no pennies in our pocket, and many of us have just a single cloth on our body. I, myself, included. Very poor English. If it is not for the American people and their generosity, their warmth, welcome, their open arms, I would not be able to have an opportunity to make a second life here. And back then, there is no resolution, nothing. But it's okay, because we know the American people are generous. We all are very generous people, and we do that by our action, not just by meaningless words. So I am not going to support this resolution, not because I do not support the Afghan refugee in... refugee in country. I do support them. I will try everything I can to help. But this resolution is not the way to do it. To me, this is just empty rhetoric. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll comment, but I can wait till—
Oh, go ahead, John.
Well, no, I'd just like to say, clarify my position. You know, this resolution came up, it's not my resolution, but I helped Tuha to where I thought it would, it's focused on the refugees. The US military just finished a campaign of over 20, 25 years, probably more, in Afghanistan with a major military withdrawal. We did not withdraw from Yemen. We didn't withdraw from Mexico. We didn't withdraw from Haiti. This has already happened. I don't agree with the way things happened, myself personally, on how we withdrew and all that, but that's done with. We're talking about, this resolution is purely regarding current refugees and people that are trying to fight their further lives, to be honest, as refugees to have a life. Nothing other than that. This is purely about the supporting refugees, and they're probably, they're already here in the country. We're not supporting them with money or places to live. The city council has no purview over where they're going to reside, but like the resolution says, we can support these people that are in need. And this is purely refugees. This isn't politics with how you felt on how we exited Afghanistan or how we got into it or how Vietnam, what if we were to, you know, voted no on a resolution for Vietnamese refugees? We didn't do that. We accepted them with open arms, like as we do with everybody. So that's where I'm coming from. Again, it wasn't brought forth by me. I simply support the resolution that's in front of me today, and that's where I stand.
George?
Oh, sure. Yeah, again, you know, I've always been the stay in your lane guy, and for the most part, most of you guys have been too. I think everyone, for the most part, has brought that up numerous times during these type of resolutions. Do I support this 100%? 100%. More so than probably any of the other resolutions that have come through here. These men and women have given more to our country than most of the natural born people that have been born in this country. And I think they earned a place here. I think they earned the support of our community, and quite frankly, I'm 100% behind this. With that being said, it has no business being at city council, period. You know, we have no jurisdiction over immigration policy. Quite frankly, I doubt that any Afghan refugees are going to know or even care if we voted this into play or not. To me, it's virtue signaling at its best. And quite frankly, it's using these poor people's position to virtue signal. Because quite frankly, no matter how we vote on this, yes, no, it's not going to change a thing. It's truly not going to change a thing. So, I mean, it's almost unconscionable that this would even come before our council. But that's where I stand.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Like I said, thank you, my colleagues, but let me be very clear. The resolution meant to be for Afghan refugee, for the 13 military soldier that died during the evacuation at the airport, we have been, there many ceremony, you know, pay respect. We even have our police department participate during the escorting the, one of the members in Riverside. But let me one more time be very clear. This resolution meant for the Afghan refugee. This is longest war the US war participated in the history, 20 years of war. A lot of Afghan refugee has been working very close with US government from being the interpreter, translator. But then, you know, the evacuation abruptly, there's no systematic of evacuate them. And then now they have to fight their life to get out of the country safely. So it's a way, it's a token of gratitude from city level, from state level, from federal. Of course, I agree, we have no jurisdiction in immigrant, immigration status. They're going to be here, but as a city level, we welcome them with an open arm, especially in City of Garden Grove. We do have a Muslim community in the mosque in City of Garden Grove, our neighbor city Anaheim, and a little further in the south of Irvine. We welcome every single city or some of the city, open arm, welcome them. And this resolution meant, is a token of gratitude. It's have nothing to do with partisan, it's have nothing to do with whether, why didn't we including, you know, the US military, the sacrifice? No, let's focus on one thing, the Afghan refugee, right? That's why I want to be clear on that. And at the same time, I mean, once again, I thank you, John O'Neill, and definitely, you know, I don't know how much I can explain this, but as a refugee myself, I'm very passionate because we, like Councilman Thapoy, as a refugee himself, he came here with nothing. We came here with nothing. But 45 years or 46 years ago, different era. There's no resolution for us. But now there's more refugee coming. Our city is a city of compassion. We call us. We welcome every single refugee, and this is the way, I'm very clear, this is the way to welcome them. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Jones, I'd just like to say, I'm all about symbolic gestures. If there's nothing we can do and it's not our jurisdiction, I'm always open and welcome to extend symbolic gestures to show either our support, our gratitude, et cetera. I will say, well, correct Councilmember Nguyen, the other Nguyen, and say that there may not have been something for you, you know, 40 years ago, 45 years ago, but we have retroactively passed several resolutions or given proclamations honoring, commemorating multiple events regarding, you know, the Vietnamese refugee experience. So, you know, I'm sure today will be the beginning for Afghanistan refugees, and we'll continue to do so moving forward if that's the case. I'm consistent, and so if you will hurry up and make your motion, I'll be glad to second it.
I will motion it.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
No.
Councilmember Tuha Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bridigum?
Abstain.
Abstain. That would be five, that motion does pass. That is with five yes, one, two, three, four yes votes, one absence, one no vote, and one abstention.
All righty, thank you. We'll move on into matters from council. Normally, I go around the horn and I go last. I would actually like to go first with an item tonight because I've got a gentleman waiting patiently in the audience for this. Oh, Fat, let me give you this. Paul Huang is a mental health leader in the county, former County of Orange employee, has worked with, very well known around the county for his mental health and wellness efforts, works closely with our police on many items, works close with Be Well OC, and, you know, we're excited that that's getting started now in Garden Grove. He's got an event that he's planned independently coming up. It's actually on Halloween Day, so it's October 31st, and it's called Trek and Treat. And just, he's been telling me about it for the last few months. I know he's been working with John Montancho's Janet Polio and Community Services and engaging with our police to kind of be involved in some of the activities and stuff like that. So just a family fun day to draw attention and awareness to wellness. And I can't really think of any other topic that's more timely and relevant in our community these days, coming out of a year and a half long pandemic, civil unrest, all the other issues we're facing as people are coming back out and getting, you know, kind of re-engaging in the world today post-pandemic. So I think, I personally think wellness is just a, it's a very critical topic that needs more attention. Thanks to Paul for his efforts around the county. I've been trying to urge him to come and do more things in Garden Grove and just bring some of the magic that he does here to Garden Grove. So anyways, he's planning to do this event, and just this morning at the Community Events Committee meeting, it was pointed out that his kind of initial flyer or the draft flyer for the event has the Garden Grove City logo on it. He's not specifically asking for any monetary contribution from the city, but would like just sort of a token from the city to say that we're supportive of what he's doing of this event. So our Office of Public Affairs pointed out that, you know, if the city logo is to be placed on these materials, if the city is going to be a non-monetary sponsor of this event, then it's something that would require an action from council to acknowledge or to officialize that it's a city cosponsored or sponsored event, as you will. I made the rounds internally today with Community Services, with Anna Polito's group and Public Affairs, whatever, and the only comment I got internally from Anna's group is that they just want the ability, kind of conditioned upon, they want the ability to kind of scrutinize any of these promotional materials that go out and make sure that they vet everything since it, you know, it would have the city's logo on it, then they don't have any issue with it. So I think this is relatively benign, but I'm bringing it up tonight. I think I have to do a two-part thing. So first, I want to bring it up as an urgency item. So to be clear, it's not an emergency, but it's an urgency item specifically because the event is October 31st. We're now at October 12th, and Paul and his group wants to get promotional materials and try and make sure people show up to it.
I'll second it.
Actively promoting.
Second it.
Oh, okay. So that's to agendize it as an emergency item.
Urgency, as an urgency.
That's the first—
And I believe—
Okay. Motion and a second call vote. Yeah.
Councilmember Bridigum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you for that. And then secondarily, I would like to move that we officialize our support of the event as a city sponsor.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bridigum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone. Thanks, Paul, for staying so late and for coming tonight in the first place. Details to follow. Everyone is invited, and please, please plan to attend and be part of this wonderful event. Thank you. Okay, I'll go on ahead. We're going to go around the horn now, so I'll start—
I would like to talk about this as well.
Oh, please, yeah, please, go ahead, sure.
You know, mayors and colleagues, I think this is a really great ideas, and it certainly would be an event that we might want to, you know, sponsor as an annual event. And so if you guys all agree, I would like to make a motion to agendize it for the following council meetings so that we can officially make this as an annual program instead of just a one-time.
Can I cut you off before anybody, second or before we do anything official on that?
Sure.
And just say, I appreciate the gesture, and I'm all on board. We've got other things in the works with Paul and moving forward, including like our Open Streets 2022 event, maybe themed around wellness and those sort of things too. So maybe just one step at a time, like take this event as a one-time, see how that goes, build into other events going forward. I'm okay with it, but I just, I just think it's maybe premature to declare this an annual event.
You don't think this will turn out to be a successful event?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, we've got other events in the works too. So who knows where this leads? I love the thought of—
I think this is a really, really great ideas, and it's all about wellness, and I think October is a time when we should English people go out and exercise because it's start of the force and getting to the windows. So I think this is a really great idea. But if you have so many thing on your plate and you don't think, you rather want to wait a little bit, that's okay with me.
I would just add that, you know, this is an R event. This is Paul's event, and who knows if he's going to want to do it next year? Hopefully, he does. So if that's the case, then, you know, we could, when it comes back to us next year, if it does—
No problem. You can wait, right? So it's no rush.
But I appreciate the gesture, and I'm 100% on board with you about doing more within the space of wellness and giving—
No, no problem.
—some free rein to come in and—
Sure. And then secondly, I would like to—
Hold on, are you going on a different topic?
Yes.
Okay. Paul, do you want to say something first real quick before we—
Oh. Okay.
Mayor and City Councilmember for supporting the event. Just to be transparent, my agency, my team and I, we are volunteering to organize this for the city and for the community because I've been listening and attending the whole meeting, and I am very touched by all that's been discussed. It brings back the idea as a former refugee, as a former boat person. We experienced trauma, we experienced anxiety, and then this past pandemic, a lot of people are anxious, a lot of people are scared, a lot of relationship has been disconnected and severed. And so the wellness event was organized with the intention and the hope as mayors and the cities reimagine Garden Grove, is how do we reimagine opening up our city, our community in a way that's open, that's welcoming, but also connecting the community members to all the services providers in our city as well as county Y. And so I will continue to volunteer and do the best I can to make this successful for the city, but more importantly, it's for the community. And I'm thinking about all the isolated seniors, all of those who didn't have a chance to go out. And I would love to connect them to everyone here in the city, and I invite everyone here to attend, including all residents of Garden Grove as well as county Y, so that we can come and support the event and build relationship. Along the right way, we're focusing on mental wellness, physical wellness, social wellness, and then the downtown areas, the community wellness. So in a way, we are elevating Garden Grove and the vision of wellness as we reimagine Garden Grove. Thank you. I'll stay around afterwards if anyone has any questions. I don't want to take up your time.
Thank you. All right, go ahead, Fat.
Ah, okay. I have only one more item, and it's related to the issue that Mrs. Terry Tran brought up earlier during auto communication. You know, with, even before ADU, and now the big monster SB9 is coming down from the state, I think the parking issue will become a nightmare for all of us. If we think it is unbearable four, five years ago, it is going to be horrendous next years. And she is correct, the parking ordinance had been so outdated, it's like, you know, decades ago that haven't been touched upon. So I think it is important that we revisit that in light of the ADU and the SB9 that coming out at us. I would really like to have my colleague, well, first of all, let me ask our city attorney, if we would like staff to take a look at that and give us some, you know, findings and recommendations, do we need to agendize it or we just could ask staff to come back with a report, and then we decide whether we will agendize it for action later on?
So normally, under policies and procedures, you would ask that it be agendized for formal action so that you can direct staff to bring back that report since that, that would create expenditure, some time and funds in order to, you know, even hire consultants in order to figure out whether the landscaping requirements under our municipal code should be revised.
Can I?
Well—
Sorry, I'm supportive of what you're saying. Can I jump in and just suggest, maybe, for when the gal who came up has a timing issue because she's sort of under the gun on that stuff anyway, so something that's, I mean, maybe, maybe you and I have a meeting with staff first just to understand the perspective and where we're at, how we got there 40 years ago, where we're at now, does it still make sense?
I think we want to do that, Mayor Jones. I think we do want to do that, but I also think that we should do something in addition to what we're going to do sitting down with staff. I think whether or not we want to, however you want to resolve the parking issue, we do really, I think we do really need to look at, take a look at that because it's already 30, 40 years old, we haven't touched it. And with the ADU coming out about four years ago and— And with the ADU coming out about four years ago, and SB9 will be coming down very soon here, I think we do have to look at that. And I think the best way to do that would be give staff the direction to, you know, sit down and take a look at that and study it and report it back to the city council. But Omar mentioned that, you know, to do that, we, we do want to agendize it, and that's why I would like to ask, you know, Mayor Jones and our colleagues to allow me to agendize it for, for the next week so that we can instruct staff to, you know, do a reexamination of our parking issue and ordinance. And then also, but well, let's word it out first, and then I follow up with some minor requests.
I'll second that.
I do think we're getting, like the mayor had said, the cart before the horse a little bit. You know, this might be part of a better, broad, citywide plan on different fronts, not just, you know, landscape stuff. I think maybe we should take your advice and figure out why we got to where we are. I mean, I saw the photographs that that one lady submitted, and quite frankly, the new photographs are terrible. I mean, from a community's standpoint with no grass, it looks really an eyesore. I mean, it really looks bad. So I can see why those laws were enacted. We don't want our housing areas looking like parking lots. And, and, you know, it's really, we've been hit hard in the last couple of years. The ADUs, SB9, things are going to get worse, and, you know, do we really want to make them even worse? I mean, maybe there's other ways we can incorporate parking into the plan besides allowing people to, you know, pave over all their grass or all their, all their landscaping. You know, I don't know. Just to me, it seems like we're putting the, I mean, we, we might want to do this an all encompassing thing instead of wasting a lot of time and resources on one small little thing. If we're going to use those people, why don't we look at a whole big broad thing, the whole parking situation and what recommendations we could get, all encompassing instead of just one little thing? You know what I'm saying? Maybe we get more bang from the buck with those consultants and whatnot doing it that way instead of peacefully in it.
Yeah. Councilman Brightigam, I didn't say that we just try to resolve this particular issue. That's not the intent here. The intent here is to come back and look at the overall parking issue, you know, why would you have a, why do you have an issue? It, it come from many, many different things, not just, you know, not just the ADU and the SB9, but ADU and SB9 intensified.
So you're including the whole permit parking and all that? Everything, all encompassing, right? Permit parking, every, everything having to do with parking?
Yes, yes, yes. We need to resolve it, and, and we need to do it sooner than later.
Yeah.
Because it is, it's become, you know, our hand.
Yeah, I would like to see some information on that, too. So I'm, I'm good as long, as long as it's just not a specific one ordinance type of thing where we're spinning our wheels on. It's an all-inclusive citywide parking strategy or something like that, I'm, I'm all in.
Go ahead, John.
I just wanted to comment real quick. I agree with everything it said, and I like your approach, Mr. Mayor. You know, let's resolve the immediate issue for this lady here. I think there's ways that we can do that. But people have to remember, there's reasons for code enforcement, codes, municipal codes, there's reasons for not paving over, you know, more than 50% of your lot. The water is intended to go in the ground, not run off into the ocean. We have an aquifer that would normally supply 100% of our water here in Garden Grove. Right now, we're dealing with other chemicals and putting filters on and doing other things. But there's reasons for these, these codes that are 40 years old, and, and I think there's ways to solve this immediate problem much easier. But I do, I would like to revisit the parking situation in Garden Grove, you know, citywide. We can approach that later. But I'm, I'm talking about study sessions, planning commission, looking at things first, getting recommendations. We can't just make a split section decision right here, right now. But I just want to let everybody know, hey, there's, there's reasons for codes, and there's reasons for, you know, having grass and shrubbery and open land available to the sky. So anyway.
If I can, let me.
One, one, one. It just occurred to me when, when I heard you mention that, John, I, you are a, you know, a union workers as well in the construction area, so I think you know a little bit about it. I myself had did, have done some research into, you know, various new technology where we can grow grass on top of membranes, steel membranes that allow grass to grow, and yet it is sturdy enough to allow car to drive over it. And so there's a lot of different way to do that, but I'm, I'm not suggesting that we should allow it here or not allow it here. What I'm saying is staff should start looking into it and come up with ideas and, you know, for some immediate solution to, to couple problem, and also to start looking at the overall wise strategy to, to, to address the landscaping and, you know, parking issue that we are facing. Mayor Jones?
Yeah, let me maybe make some more comments and just try and reframe this thing after we've all kind of spoken a little bit. I think there's two things here. For one is this got brought to our attention by a property owner in town, or whatever that sort of brings pictures and argument, and she's under the gun with code enforcement. So for starters, I do not fault our code enforcement officers one bit for going out and proactively doing their jobs and, and, you know, enforcing what we currently have on, on the books. I am, however, empathetic to the property owner's argument about, you know, taking a fresh new look at code. This specific issue is something that came up over near Hester and Lamson Kim in your district sometime last year, where there's issues of kind of overflow parking from the mobile home parks and apartments. So certain dense neighborhoods in town that have inherent parking issues, you know, at least in those areas, that was a specific idea that came up during those town hall meeting discussions was, you know, what about being able to encroach into some of the landscape setback to add more parking in some of those areas to try and relieve some of just the parking overflow? So that may be a viable option for some of our more dense neighborhoods that have, that just have really bad parking issues that spill over into adjacent neighborhoods and that sort of thing. So I just think it's an option that we should explore. I agree, George, that, and Fat, I agree that there are bigger issues here, right? I mean, ADUs are going to dramatically change the character of our neighborhoods. That's not something we asked for, but it's something that's being mandated down upon us by the state. Same with SB9 that just passed where you can split lots and do things. So there's a lot of dramatic change coming to the character of neighborhoods that's being imposed upon us by the state. We're going to have to deal with that at a local level when it comes to parking and functionality of these things. So I do think, I am supportive of directing staff to kind of bring back something. I don't know that it's realistic that they can do that in two weeks or should. I think, I think that what they bring back should be more of a comprehensive study session that talks about ADUs and SB9 and parking issues and just where we at. In fact, I think we're actually going through an updating code and zoning and doing things. We're in that process right now, anyway. So maybe it's timely, but just to kind of give staff direction that at some point we want, I'm not saying blow it off indefinitely, I just don't know that it's realistic to tell staff, drop what you're doing and come back in two weeks and focus on just this. But, you know, I, I would like to have that study session, discuss those things. In the interim, I'm hoping we can at least put a pause on this particular code enforcement request while we kind of augment it and look into how we change that. So if that's possible, I'd like to see if we could.
The motion is only to agenda that, so at the next council meeting, we would vote on whether or not we.
Are directing staff.
Directing staff to, to begin the study and bring it back to, to the city council. It's not, it's not that do it, but they will, we will decide whether or not we direct them to do it.
Got it. Okay. Any other comments on that, or, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm good with this. I really do think a real comprehensive deep dive look into the parking situations in Garden Grove needs to be done sooner than later. You know, there's, parking's been a problem for a long time, and quite frankly, I don't think it's gotten the attention from this dais that it deserves. But like the mayor said, I don't want to put timeframes on staff because, quite frankly, this is a deep dive we're asking of them.
Yeah.
And it might take six months. So I don't know that we even need to vote on something like that. They, they can hear our comments, they know what we're saying, and they know we, you know, we're, we're kind of open. I mean, we can direct them to, with a, with a specific date, but it, you know, is it going to be a realistic date? You know, I don't know how long that kind of.
The matter needs to be agendized so that the council can give direction. Otherwise, staff will do nothing.
Well, we can give direction, but we don't have to give a date, right?
And then we can narrow it down specifically what we're asking for.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Councilman Brightigam, if we don't do it now, we've been having this problem for more than three years now.
No, I'm with you. I'm with you on that.
So if we don't do it now, directing them specifically, then it will never get off the road.
Yeah. No, I'm with you. I just don't want to shortcut it.
No, no, no. There's no time, there's no time limit here. We didn't say that it had to be done in two weeks or four weeks.
Omar's fringing because we're deliberating on something that we're just supposed to bring back and deliberate on is voting on it.
I'll second it.
So roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I wanted to again mention, as mentioned before in public comment, the GGT Teen Action Collaborative will be on October 21st, 2021 at 4:00 PM at the CMC. It's a great opportunity to have our youth get involved in, you know, civically. And I would just caution that if you are not a parent or guardian or a student, that you not attend unless you're invited. This is an opportunity for our youth to, you know, share their voices in a safe and comfortable space. So let's make sure that we respect and protect that. And secondly, I wanted to highlight the Jack-o'-lantern Jamboree on October 30th from 1 to 4 at Atlantis Park. Tickets went on sale yesterday, so may the odds be ever in your favor. And that's all I have. Oh, and happy birthday, Mayor Jones.
Thank you. Councilmember Tuhoen?
Happy birthday, Mr. Mayors. And I also want to say happy birthday to my son who turned 12 yesterday, a B teen. And thank you, it's very pleasure to working with all of you, the councilmembers. And, no, it's okay, I say for next time because it's not Halloween yet.
Councilmember John O'Neill?
Yeah, happy birthday. Oh, to be 39 again, huh?
Yep. That's my story.
Just wanted to comment real quick. Councilmember Brightigam and I were able to attend the Brown Descents Car Show on last Saturday at the Orangewood Baptist Church right there at Dale and Orangewood. And thanks to Pastor Ty, who, you know, gave the use of his parking lot to do that, and the Garden Grove PD was out representing, and George and I. And the Brown Descents, basically, if you drove by there, you saw a lot of old, great looking classic cars that these guys and gals love to work on and show off. But it wasn't all about that. It was about a toy drive for, you know, underprivileged, underprivileged, privileged kids, excuse me. And, you know, they filled up, just in the short few hours we were there, filled up the back of an F-150 pickup truck with toys that they can give out at Christmas.
Extended cab.
Extended cab, yeah. Anyway, not only that, that's just a drop in the bucket. These guys and gals, they've, they do this all over the place, and every year, they give out scholarships to high school kids, anywhere from $500 to $2,500 each, from, from Long Beach to the Inland Empire. So anytime we get an opportunity to, to, to help these groups out, you know, it's about the kids and the underprivileged folks, and, and just to see a kid's face light up that has really nothing, and they get a basketball or a toy, you know, from that organization, it's just, it's a life changer for a lot of these folks. So just wanted to report on that. And Robert Esparza is the, was the head of that group, and I think George has known him for a while. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brightigam?
Yeah. Let me be the first to invite everyone to the 2021 Trek and Treat Wellness Day, Sunday, October 31st, 2021, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. There will be a flyer probably on the city website, or I'll at least put it on my social media, and I'm sure the rest of you will as well. So we do have that. Again, as Councilman O'Neill was talking about, we were at the Brown Descendants Car Show Toy Drive, and it was really just for, I think it was the third or fourth one, they said, or? They, they raise a lot of money, a lot of toys for Christmas for, and sometimes they are looking for not needy families, but families who could benefit from, from it. And so I'm hopeful that our police department, when the time comes, will point them in the right direction where those resources could be utilized best. Last night was a windy night. I'm sure trees were down in a lot of places, but one of the trees that fell down was in the street right across from me. It was about 120, 130 foot pine tree, and a big one. I mean, that thing weighs thousands of pounds, probably tens of thousands of pounds. And, you know, it seems like every time we get a windy day, another one of those goes down. And we're really fortunate that this tree fell down, fell across the sidewalk, or, yeah, pulled up the sidewalk, it went across the curb, went across the street, went across the sidewalk on the other side, went through the yard of the neighbor, and it stopped about two inches from the front door of the house across the street from it. So it's a pretty big tree. I don't know if any cars were taken out or not. I had inquired, but I hadn't heard. My wife was walking the dog, and the city crews were out there sawing away, trying to clear the road and make it accessible for traffic. And they, I'm sure they were there till the wee hours of the morning, you know, with their chainsaws. But every year, these trees, at least one or two of them fall, and we've been very lucky that they've only hit cars. But these trees are huge. I mean, we're substantial trees, and we've been very lucky that the wind was blowing in a way that it blew the tree that way instead of the other way, where it would have probably crushed at least two or three homes, maybe killed people. You know, just with an eye for public safety, we, we got to think, we got to have a better plan for these trees. I mean, they're going to need to be thin. If, if we're going to leave them alone, then we need to thin those things regularly and trim them so the wind can't pull them over like that. You know, they get trimmed once every three to five years. They got to be done every three to six months if we're going to keep them. I mean, that's the reality. We got a lot of risk here. People could die, homes could be damaged, cars can be damaged. You know, so we need to really look at these trees seriously. They're beyond the point of, oh, well, they're cute, they're beautiful tree, and they're wonderful trees. I don't, I'm not saying we need to remove them, I'm not saying, but we got to do something. If that means better maintenance, getting out there and trimming them more often, but, you know, those things get full every probably six months, they're back to being full again with all the pine needles and whatnot. And then they're just big, huge sails in the wind, and it's just a matter of time before somebody gets killed. You know, it lands on some kid's bedroom or something. So anyway, we need to focus a little bit on, on that. I would urge staff to look into a better plan for at least the large pine trees that could, you know, maybe come up with some ideas. And I think that's about it.
I forgot to mention that Care Ambulance and Jimmy Webb were very instrumental in the car show and the toy drive, so wanted to shout out to Care Ambulance and Jimmy Webb. Cool. City Manager Scott Stiles?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Our Assistant City Manager Lisa Kim reminded me, and I'll share with you, that we did recently receive a SCAG grant to study parking solutions in certain of our disadvantaged community areas. So your timing may be very good for this. We expect it's, it'll be a full curb analysis study, but I'll be talking to the staff about, you know, if we can incorporate some of the things that you're talking about. And I wanted to just remind you about that, and it might be part of, as we talk about this at our next, next council meeting when we agendize it. So just wanted to share about that. And at this particular report, Lisa indicated that we expect that to be completed in the next six months. So it goes along the lines of what some of, some of your comments were, but we can certainly have more conversation with you in two weeks, and we look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. General Counsel, do we have any need for closed session or anything to report?[1783.11] to report?
We had no closed session and no need for that.
All righty, thank you. With that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and enjoy the rest of your evening.